Diligent to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with whom our true justice is for all.
Secretary Tenon, welcome.
All members present. There's not too much going on because the legislature, they're just assigning people to committees and chairs. We will report though that Joel Kitchens was appointed to the Education, Assembly Committee on Education. I think that's good because Joel is a past board member in Sturgeon Bay and so he knows what districts are facing with the challenges that we have. So I was happy to see that. Governor Evers is announcing a budget listening session. He's calling it Doing the Right Thing as he prepares for the 2325 budget. He had one session December 13th in Kenosha. There was a virtual one on the 14th. And then there's one in Green Bay tomorrow. So hopefully that turned out well. Did anybody look at any of the?
Oh, the resolutions.
The resolutions?
I did because I'm.
Are we going to talk about these at all or?
We could, sure. If there's a few that you thought were pertinent.
Well, no, I just, a couple of them that I, there's one on voter education. They want to add voter education to the foreign language, economics, science, writing, language arts. Why is that necessary if we're, because civics in government is already required and if you're teaching your civics in government correctly, voter education is.
That's sort of what I think should be a vital part of it.
Isn't on issue. So I would be totally against that one. Who's on though?
I am.
Oh, you are? Okay, I'd be totally against that.
Got it.
There was another one for funding of charter schools that aren't from a local school board district. Should come out of the state funds, not the local district's funds. I think that's probably a little no-brainer. There are a number of them on students with disabilities. Parent contracts for private school transportation, which we really got impacted on this year. They want to go to paying per family rather than per student.
Right.
And so that would be.
So that's one we support definitely.
I can't imagine that this, that one would not pass. Unemployment compensation was another one. Did you look at that one? If you leave your district and then you, you get a job for the following fall, you would not be entitled to unemployment for the summer. Makes sense. Makes sense. Things like that. There's something about federal mandates regarding withholding school pro, and then federal mandates, they tell you want to do something, you have to do something, but if you don't, they're going to threaten you withholding your funds. I'm not, I don't think anybody here is in favor of that because that takes away local control. You know how much we like local control. So things like that.
Yeah, it's interesting. The ones that you have mentioned were sort of the ones that had stuck in my head of, yeah.
As I was going through these, I thought, well, some of these should make some very interesting discussions. So I'm going to.
There's quite a few this year. So it could be, it could be lengthy.
Yeah, I think it could make some pretty interesting discussion. The last thing here, there was a shared services committee meeting and they're back at the end of November. I haven't gotten anything on it, but they're talking about shared services from school, different school districts, you know, and we're, we're kind of leading the way on that one as, as usual, especially with the Ag program. So I thought that was good. Maybe we could give them a few pointers.
Yeah, what makes me a little nervous about that committee is every time they're talking about the shared services committee meeting, they're talking about consolidating districts.
Oh, okay, yes.
So I'm hoping that it's not just a code name that they're trying to push something else.
Well, they're talking about sharing, sharing services here. So.
So I'm hoping if they find that people are cooperating with each other and sharing services that they don't have to start talking about consolidating services.
Because I don't think most people in their communities do not want to lose their school district. I would not want to lose, I don't think anybody here wants to lose their school district. So I think the shared services, especially when you're small district like we are.
Right, are important.
And you know, down the road a little bit, I think that's, that's the way for us to go. And then the last thing is, I know we talked about our last meeting, I think, about the amount of money that went out for private school vouchers. And I just, my husband belongs to the other church in town and so he got his report here. And it appears that a good portion of that 240, 250 stayed local. It went to the only private school that's open right now. My, my concern is, is in Madison, they want to take off the income caps on that. So in an essence, the taxpayers would be asked or forced basically to support two separate school systems.
Well, they are already being asked.
But not, not 100%.
Not 100%.
Not 100%. But you know, people don't realize that if you have, let's say we have 20 kids that get the voucher going to a private school. Well, that's 20 kids K through 12. That doesn't mean we can, we can reduce our staff because it might only be two kids in one grade. So that's going to be a problem for us. So just want people aware of that.
Well, already a quarter of a million of the taxpayer dollars is going to a private entity. I don't, you know, that's, I don't know where the separation of church and state is anymore.
There isn't.
Because I totally am for private schools. That's certainly, you know, a choice people can make and I, you know, there can be some great schools. But I don't think that the taxpayers should be basically paying for it. And I also don't understand how these entities can be, you know, tax deferred because of religious affiliation and taking all this taxpayer money. So I mean, to me, it just, none of it makes sense to me. So I think, yeah, we can't pay for two, the taxpayers can't pay for two schools.
We can't, we can't support two separate school systems then.
That's, yeah.
That's it?
Yeah. All right.
You know, we talked about that at the last CISA meeting last week. And there's a gentleman that sits on the CISA 7 board with me and he comes from a district about our size. And they had $400,000 go out to the vouchers.
Oh, wow.
Can you imagine what that would do to our district?
No, that could very well happen then.
It could very well happen. I know in the, in the special education voucher, we can, we can tax the taxpayers again if we, if we, if it comes to that.
Well, all of these.
But is it the same thing with, with this? I mean, can we?
There's a certain percentage that's reimbursable for the special.
Okay, not the, but what about, but what about just the regular school vouchers? We're not, those aren't reimbursable, just part of the special. Okay.
It's not a good situation and yeah, so we'll have to cross our fingers.
Yeah.
All right. Your report, Board CISA.
I don't have a whole heck of a lot. The, I have some reports on the youth apprentice program again and, you know, if anybody wants to know the numbers, she's going to give this to us every month. Also payroll, HR, and business manager services will be coming soon. So that might be something we really want to take a look at. We do have a new business manager at CISA and she's just top-notch, very top-notch. I'm very, very happy with her.
Angie came from Howard Slomaco District, I believe.
Okay.
She's very familiar with school finance.
She's, yeah, she is great.
She was the business manager there? Is that what you're, okay. Nice.
Yeah, that'll be a really good person to have on the board. Well, stay tuned on that, we'll look into it. Anything else?
Nope.
All right. Student representative, your report, Max.
At the end of the, our food drive will be done last day of the first things is Thursday because on Thursday I bring out the Kiwanis. The dinner concert was held last week with the band and choir and it was like 300 plus people arrived. So that was a bunch, that was a big success. Three youth leaders spoke at a webinar. That was, I think, with Ms. Colon. And then the different groups of people in the school went to the long-term care facility. I was a part of it. We made Christmas decorations and we got to decorate the, what's it, long-term care facility. I think we put in a choir one and also a Bella Tease one. So that would've been nice. And then with sports, the basketball season is beginning and also Christmas break is starting on Friday.
Everyone's looking forward to. How is the food drive going?
It's going good. I had to get two bins at the bottom to make sure we fit everything. It's exciting, but it was a success.
Yeah. Congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Any questions for Max? All right, we'll keep moving. No misconceptions or rumors. Nobody here to sign in. As far as my announcements, it's like, where has this year gone? The next time we have a meeting, it'll be 2023. But I want to wish everyone in this room, as well as in the community and in our school district, a very happy holiday season and hopefully it's a good time with family and friends and some relaxation and fun. So, and then with that, I'll move on to you, Jessie.
All right. For superintendent and business manager report, just want to remind everyone about dates of candidacy. So notice of non-candidacy for our two board members is due on the 23rd. And then for anyone in the public that wishes to run, paperwork needs to be filed by January 3rd of 2023. That paperwork can be obtained here in our business office. So you can stop any time, anytime between 8:00 and 4:00 to pick up those papers. Moving on to the school calendar for 2324. So from our last meeting, we discussed that and did a survey to staff members and to families. We had about 250 responses, I believe.
That's good.
252 responses. So I thought that was a good turnout. Overwhelmingly, it was Calendar A that got the most results. It was about 88.5% for Calendar A and 11.5% for Calendar B. So Calendar A is the one that had spring break tied to the Easter break. A few notes that we just need slight changes for the calendar though. We usually tie that day off in January, which is a staff development day, to the end of the quarter. And because we are bumping up the start of the school year, it didn't align on the calendars as is with the end of the quarter or the semester. So that actually is going to be the 22nd of January, not the 15th. And we would have done that for both of the calendars. And then with that, we also did not make adjustments for the amount of days per quarter. So in January, it should read 44 days and in March, it should read 44 days as well. But those are two slight changes, so we'll talk a little bit more about that, the calendar and the action items. Update on the Ag and Education Committee or the work that we've been doing. And so we met on December 3rd with community. We had about 30 community members, both local farmers, large farmers, business owners, higher education institutions, local school district officials, and came up with some really great ideas. We spent about six hours together on a Saturday and the end result was we came up with six goals that we are going to work on with the other districts. And the first goal is that each district will specialize in a certain area. We have not come up with what those areas are going to be yet. We know that this is going to be a work in progress. The second goal is that we really want to develop a universal kindergarten through fifth grade curriculum that really exposes our students at an early age to agriculture. So kind of an introduction piece to it. And we would tie that to our science standards as well. The third goal is that we would involve community and business people to make sure that this is possible, including some field trips, internships, mentoring programs. We're hoping to bring back the Ag career days through the Kiwanis Development, County Development, I believe it is. And so that's hopefully going to take place in April for our seventh and eighth graders. The fourth goal is that we would provide opportunities to learn, for students to learn more soft skills and public speaking skills. That is something we heard loud and clear from the business owners is that our students just may not be well-prepared for when they enter the workforce and how to communicate sometimes. And we know technology is a big piece of that, right? Students have their cell phones with them at all times. So that is an area I think we can work on across the board in all classes, so. The fifth goal is that we would involve local colleges and technical colleges to make sure that we are aligning our courses with some dual credit options. So working with our technical colleges, whether that would be NWTC or Fox Valley Tech. Those are the two that we're looking at, but making sure that every student has an academic and career plan in place for them, so. Now the sixth goal is making sure that we involve parents in this process as well. That's going to be a really, really important piece. Educating our parents on what options are out there for our students to take part in while they're in high school and how that may impact them once they leave high school and go into the career force or post-secondary education. So all those six goals are pretty ambitious. We needed to narrow them down into ones that are achievable this year yet, that we're looking at. And so the superintendents met and we feel that the universal curriculum for kindergarten through fifth grade is something that can be worked on. So we're going to take steps towards that. And then also developing the soft skills in public speaking, we're going to work on that piece as well. And then the course handbook, so. The other items that I listed that are goals, those are going to be more long-term. We, most districts have their course handbooks coming out in January for approval. So realistically, to be able to specialize in a certain area, to have equipment and a teacher and curriculum in place for next year, probably is not going to be realistic at this point. So we're looking at, it would be 2425 for most of the specialized programs to start up, so. Any questions about the Ag program, the updates? Some exciting work. We're really pleased to see this move forward, so.
Yeah, you're making good progress.
Yeah. And then I want to just give an overview of some opportunities for our high school students. I invited Casey Holloway, our school counselor for the middle school and high school here. And she has a short presentation and I gave you a packet that she'll be going through. So I'm going to turn it over to Casey.
So I did give you guys a packet and not to be going word for word, that actually goes a little bit more in-depth than the overview that I'm going to go over. But it allows you guys to kind of read at your leisure and then if you have additional questions that, you know, spark because of that or whatever, you can let me know and then we can kind of go through that. So along with what Jessie had said, academic and career planning is a hot topic that we're really trying to figure out what is the best way to allow our students the opportunities that we can, especially in a small district, and get them ready for like after Algoma High School. So I just kind of wanted to over, go over and give you guys all an overview of the things that we already have in place. You guys are aware of the different things and also to get it out in the community a little bit more about the things that we are offering within Algoma. So we do have quite a few dual credit options. So the dual credit options are the courses that students can take where they earn both high school and college credit. The best option at this point that we have monetarily is our transcribed classes. So those are the classes that our high school teachers will teach and they do have to get certified through the institution. Right now, those classes are offered through NWTC. NWTC does have to comply with the Higher Learning Commission, which is the same commission that oversees and accredits the four-year institutions as well within the United States. So our teachers have to meet the criteria in order to teach those classes. They are basically the same curriculum. I shouldn't say basically. They are the same curriculum that students would get if they were to take the classes at NWTC. However, just like professor to professor, instructor to instructor, the way that those standards are presented to the students, we do have some local control over, over that. They do have to meet the same standards that they would receive within the classroom. The great part about it is that there is no cost to the district in order to offer those classes. So within the past decade-plus, we've been really trying to gather as many of those types of classes that we can because it is the most bang for your buck, both from the school perspective as well as the student's perspective. The only cost that we really accrue as a district is if new textbooks need to be purchased to go along with the curriculum. And every year, the instructors do have to go to NWTC for their spring summit. So if they need a substitute, that would be a cost as well. Otherwise, there's no tuition that exchanges. So that is a really nice opportunity. Another great opportunity is that some of the students can start taking those classes as ninth or 10th graders. Some of the classes are available at that young of an age. So they can start taking some of those right when they begin high school. The other thing that is nice about those classes is that if a student were to not perform very well in those classes, that gets taken off of their transcript. So it does not become part of their record because the institution wants them to be able to try things out and be able to have those experiences, but also doesn't want it to affect their ability to obtain financial aid once they leave high school because your GPA does, does affect that. At this time, we have 31 different courses that students can take. Some of them are not necessarily offered every single year. Some of them are kind of on hiatus for right now, but we do have the opportunity to offer those. The only negative thing at this point in time is that for some of our classes that are general studies classes, so the classes that would transfer not only within the technical system, but into the four-year system, the Higher Learning Commission does require a master's degree in that specific curriculum area and/or a master's degree plus getting credits in, in that specific area. We are limited at the amount of teachers that do qualify that way. So as of right now, at the beginning of the 2025 school year, so 2025, '26 school year, we may not be able to offer some of the classes that we do have currently. So students do have through the 2024, '25 school year to take advantage of all of the transcribed classes. So we are looking at other options as well so that if the HLC does not continue to give us a little bit of a grace period, that we have other options for our students.
Casey, can I just interrupt?
Yep.
That's been extended three times now?
Yep.
So that'll be running out at the end of '25. So our hope is that it will get extended again.
Yes. So, yes. We, we continue to hope that they will, that they will do that. That leads into another, another type of program that we offer and that is the College Credit in High School, which is through UWGB and the CAP program, which is through UW-Oshkosh. Both of those programs have specific courses that they offer to high school teachers to instruct. And it's just like the transcribed classes where they have to teach the same curriculum that they would be taught if they were attending UWGB or UW-Oshkosh. They have to meet the HLC requirements for teaching those classes. The only thing that really is different is that there is tuition that is included for these classes. However, that tuition is much less than it would normally be. So those courses are $100 of credit and then the Algoma School District has agreed to pay $50 of that tuition for the students. So the students are required to pay $50 per credit and then the district covers the other $50. So for a three-credit class, which would normally cost around $600 if they were to take it in the, in the regular setting, is going to cost them about $150. So both of those programs, we have courses within. And right now, we have eight of those courses where students can take history classes, math classes. There is even an IT class that we haven't offered yet, but we have the availability to teach that. The other option that we do have is Start College Now and the Early College Credit Program, which that is the old Youth Options Program. So that one is the one where the school district does cover the tuition and books for the student if we do not have a class within our district that is comparable to the class. So for instance, if a student wanted to take Intro to Psychology and they submitted the paperwork for Start College Now or Early College Credit, we would be able to decline that because we already offer Intro to Psychology. And just because it didn't possibly work in their schedule, we would not be obligated to pay for that class. So I would say the majority of our students, we don't have very many that utilize the Early College Credit Program. They utilize the other options. We do have students that do utilize the Start College Now for CNA, medical terminology, American Sign Language, some of our agriculture classes, as well as like criminal justice classes that we, that we don't have available to our students. So those classes do cost the district because we do have to pay the tuition and the books. So we have been trying very hard to find other options like the first ones that I mentioned so that it's not costing the district as much, but it's still providing the students with a variety of opportunities to be, you know, academic and career ready post-high school.
Wow.
No, I thought, no, I thought you had a question. Which then leads into, so those are just our, like our dual credit options. So the, the options that students have to earn college credit while in high school, which we have many, many opportunities for them to be very, you know, very high with the credit amount that they can graduate with and start college with. But then we also have the Youth Apprenticeship Program, which has been a huge blessing, I think, for our students and our community for that matter. We, in the, in the 18 years that I've been with the district, we've had very few students that have participated in the apprenticeship. And currently, we have eight students, which for some districts would not be a lot. But for a district our size, that's eight of our, of our senior students, which is a, is a good, a good amount. And that's just in year one of being part of the, the Youth Apprenticeship Program through CISA 7. So I think that that is a great opportunity for our students. Lauren Ballman, who comes in every Monday and works with, within our district, has been a blessing. She not only is working one-on-one with the students with Youth Apprenticeship, but then she's also working with those students that might not be ready for the commitment of Youth Apprenticeship and the 450 hours that's required, but, you know, are interested in learning more about different careers and opportunities. So we're, we're working together to set the kids up with different job shadows or career interviews and just learning about different careers. We've been going on some career tours where the kids are being, you know, initiated into a lot of the different careers that they don't really have any idea of what's really out there. We went to CTI Hospitality and the kids were amazed at all of the different things that go into that business because they had an idea in their mind as to what CTI Hospitality was. And then they learned. And then, they learned so much more about the different companies and so forth. So, I think for a district our size, we provide a lot of wonderful academic and career-based opportunities for our students to really gain the knowledge that they need in order to, you know, leave our school with an idea, or at least an idea of what they don't want to do. I think that's pretty amazing. But any questions that you have?
The teachers that are qualified to teach, is there a class they have to take? Is there a fee assessed to that?
So, yes, potentially. So, there are some of the classes, which would be more of the classes, like for instance, Matt Abel or Erin Malone or Larry Baumann would teach, which are more of the program-based classes. They can potentially be certified to teach different classes based on taking the class and like auditing it.
But there must be a fee associated with that certification?
No, there is no fee. They're able to do that through like NWTC. This is specifically through like the technical college. But they're able to audit those, take those classes. They'll do like a train-the-trainer and be able to be certified then to teach those classes.
Nice.
And then, they just have to go to that seminar?
Yep.
When you were talking about where we just have to cover their class with us up?
Yep.
And there's no fee to them for that?
No.
Nice. Casey, is this something like Annette Wallace did years ago? Remember, she taught some classes through?
So, she did like a-
Through one of those programs?
Yeah, she did like a cohort, because she was also working with CISA IX with the Wisconsin Virtual School.
Okay, there's where you're going, okay.
And so, we did kind of a pilot where it was like a blend-in situation.
Okay.
So, I'm really happy to hear that it sounds like the Youth Apprenticeship through CISA VII seems to be working out well. Because that was something we were, we had not always had the best experience working with them. And we thought, well, you know, we'll give it this year, and it sounds like it's working real well. So, that's very good, good to hear.
The thing that I think you have to be careful on that is, and I've seen some firsthand, that they don't just become hired men when you get busy. Doing the same thing over and over.
Right, yeah.
And we are reimbursed from the state for every student that is part of the YA program? We give a thousand dollars the following school year for that.
Yep, so we have the opportunity that way to get reimbursement through the Act 59 CT incentive grant that way. And then, also if our kids get certified, so like if they get certified as a CNA, we can request reimbursement for that. So, it does, for some of the classes that we then have to pay out for, it does kind of come back to us in some way, shape, or form, so. Oh, and we do have, I forgot to mention, we do have two senior students that are doing the Diesel Program up in Sturgeon Bay. So, they will have their first year of the Diesel Program completed by graduation. And then, we have two junior students that are going to be starting the Diesel Program at Luxembourg with NWTC next semester. So, after their senior year, they will also have, I think, just short of a year with that program as well.
Okay.
So, that's a great opportunity.
The TC program up in Sturgeon Bay, you get actual credits, correct? You get credits at the one in Luxembourg? You do? Or is it just a certification?
Yep, both, they will not have a full certification by the time that they're done with it.
Okay, but they do get credits, okay.
No, they won't finish like an actual certification. They'll be farther along in the program, but not an actual certification.
Yeah, because my understanding that LC was not part of NWTC for that, and that's why the Sturgeon Bay Program offered them a different?
So, we, so Luxembourg Casco does have the program in conjunction, and they have an automotive program as well with NWTC. For the two students that are doing it up at the Sturgeon Bay campus, because of how Luxembourg Casco has it situated, they wouldn't have been able to gain as much. Because they would have only been able to start in spring, this spring, with that program. So, they would have only been able to obtain a few of the courses. So, this allows them, and their schedule's allowed for it. So, it allowed for them to be able to get a little bit further along.
So, at least they have the option of what's best for them.
Yeah, this is, I think it is really important, not only to remind us as a board, but to remind the community of everything, like you say, for a small district that is offered. And it isn't just the first year we're offering it, you know? This is a longstanding tradition.
Yeah, we just keep building, and yeah, we just keep building and building. And that's kind of the amazing thing, is that we kind of try to figure out the hot areas of, you know, needs within our community and trying to figure out, okay, how can we offer different classes within our school that, you know, students can earn high school credit as well as college credit and be able to gain some experience within a career of interest for them? So, if they take the opportunity?
Right.
Then, it's a win-win for them.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
Absolutely. Any other questions for Casey? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Drive safe.
Did you have anything more to say, Jessie?
I am complete, thank you.
Okay, we will move on.
All right, I have two shorter items this month. First of all, some December bright spots this month has fallen probably three times recently as the month of November has. But on December fifth, students in grades two through six attended the UWGB men's basketball game at the Rash Center. This trip was part of the college's education day, where they provided tickets to schools and to students free of charge. That was for students, for staff, and for any chaperones that attended. The elementary school did attend that field trip right before schools closed down near Pobit. And we went that February, and then in March, schools closed. So, this is the first time that they have held it again since reopening schools. It was a really good time. Another bright spot would be one of our 4K teachers, Rachel Van Gremes. She is working towards obtaining her master's degree. And as part of that, she hosted a parent informational session all about literacy development, focusing specifically on early literacy and what that could look like in the home and what caregivers could do to support the literacy development of their children as early as two years old, just exposing them to texts and books and just the way that your voice may read through some of those things. So, she had different stations set up, she had different texts set up. She had pretty good turnout, it was a smaller turnout, but it was definitely, she said it went longer than expected. They had some really good conversation, and so I totally got this, the sign of a successful event. So, kudos to her for hosting that. Holiday festivities, of course, are well underway. Once again, we have our peer leaders who have helped to collect money for the Holiday Helpers Program. They did a stocking fundraiser again. That fundraiser is part of the Aloma Carrying Tree, so that fundraiser helps to provide gifts for families in need. They are finishing up with purchasing and wrapping and coordinating pickup of all of those gifts. So, I don't have any totals yet for you as far as how many families benefited from that program this year. But Rachel Van Gremes teamed up once again with J.D. Robinson to do the Candy Cane Grams. Rachel just sent out an email to the data team that they raised five hundred dollars for the Candy Cane Gram, from the Candy Cane Grams, which goes directly towards the Carrying Tree and the Holiday Helpers. So, kind of all one in the same, that's always such a great thing for families in our community. The PTS sponsored a tree at the Park of Lights. So, Mrs. Kandervski, with the help of some students, made ornaments, and then they went and decorated that tree, so thank you to them. And then, Mr. Schmidt coordinated his annual holiday walk around town. This year, it just so happened to fall in our two-hour delay, so he planned ahead, it was a little bit crazy, a little bit hectic, but all the businesses were very helpful and flexible and understanding. He sent me a list, and I just want to read to you the different businesses that participated in that. So, the three students went to the bakery, where they constructed and decorated holiday cookies made of edible treats. They went to Juicery, Blue Yorki Juicery, and they learned about and enjoyed cold crust juices. They went to the Pottery Co-op to paint Christmas ornaments. Cafe Tlazza, where they got to relax, enjoy hot chocolate and lunch, because it did happen to fall for lunch hour because of the tour delay. And then, they did come up here, and with the Abilities Project, they did a screen-printed book bags. So, just a huge thank you to Mr. Schmidt for coordinating that, all of the other teacher chaperones, and then obviously, all of the businesses that hosted us and hosted our students. It's always something that they look forward to. And then, lastly, on Thursday, fingers crossed, we'll be here for all of our 4K through fourth grade concerts. Ten o'clock is our 4K and kindergarten concert, first and second grade is at one, third and fourth grade is at one forty-five. And then, the PTS will be hosting a bake sale after each of those concerts in the commons. So, everyone is welcome to attend, and we hope to see everybody there.
There's nothing cuter than watching the young ones in their Christmas concerts.
It just makes my day.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so let's hope that the weather permits and everything. Any questions for Katie? All right, we'll keep going. Are you going to be giving the youth report?
I will, yes, give Daisy's report, she's not here. So, our beta initiative, Megan and Izzy are some high school students that are in beta class with Ms. Brenda, and they have done the first tests of change to see how they can support feminine hygiene. And so, they have put in one of the girls' bathrooms, all of the materials, supplies that females need. And so, it's going very well. Actually, met with one of the students today, and they're hoping to expand it to all of the other bathrooms throughout this building and down at the elementary school. So, this was a great example of a student-led initiative that has taken action and has just kind of developed and keep growing, so we're excited about that. Adulting 101 and Personal Finance, Mark Conkel from Nicolaid Bank spoke to the students, and it was very successful. He went over different types of checking accounts, savings accounts, and how to protect your money. He also spoke about how to build credit to the students, so that was interesting. As Max said, they had the dinner concert on December tenth. It was a Saturday, so the choirs and the bands performed. I heard it was a great success, I was not able to attend, but. Junior Achievement Course with Marie Baumann's students. They just finished a ten-week online budget simulation challenge last week. And so, they had, there were sixty-seven teams across the US that participated in this, and they finished in fifth place.
Wow.
So, they looked at career exploration, financial literacy, and it ranged from seventh grade to sophomores, so. Students also earned eight certificates, four financial literacy mastery certificates that are awarded to students who complete all quizzes and earn an average score of at least ninety percent. So, congratulations to those students. The Social Studies Seminar, the freshmen will be starting a mock Congress in Social Studies Seminar class. They'll be learning about a bill to pass into law and the process that goes into that. They'll create their own bills and form their own committees to present to the general session. So, the last item he has listed is Bowling Club. So, this is their first year with a bowling club led by Alex Van Lannan. And I believe they're competing against other local districts in the area, and they took first place, I believe, at one of their latest competitions, so.
That's awesome. Where do they bowling, piece of work?
I think they have to bowling Kiwanee because the lanes have to be certified, or I don't think they're certified here, so.
Probably not.
They're getting t-shirts made right now as they speak about for bowling club, so. I ordered one. All right, that's all I have.
Questions for Jessie? Okay, we'll move on. Abby, Pathfinder ABA report.
So, Pathfinder students recently finished their Foodwise program by creating a fruit crisp through, and that program is through UW Extension. And then, for ABA, we had a couple, like a group of five students helped to organize and distribute toys for the Dora County Toy Drive. And the toy drive gathered more than five thousand toys and helped over five hundred children. And the students were super excited about that and got to see like the scope of all the toys in one room and distributing that. And they just had really kind of glowing remarks about the experience and then the impact that they saw they were able to make in the community. And then, we also are doing holiday gift explorations right now in ABA, where students are getting to make soap, candles, pottery, and different woodburned ornaments. And that's been quite an experience, lots of feeling forward moments, which is awesome, too. Trying to figure out how to get candles level is trickier than I thought, but we figured it out. So, it's been really fun and kind of just a nice spirit in the classroom, too, because this time of year can be a little tough. And then, we also recently had two excursions, one to Odyssey Climbing and Fitness, and then also the Coffee Wizards in Green Bay. So, two kind of businesses. And Odyssey, the students got to see where they're at in the construction process, which is kind of a new experience for a lot of them. They got to wear hard hats, which was interesting to see some of their reactions to that. But they also got to see how they do the route setting, which was really interesting. They learned about different careers in both construction and climbing. And then, also talked with the owners about following up in the future to go and climb, because a lot of students have never had that experience. So, that's exciting. And then, at Coffee Wizards, they got to learn about how they got their business off the ground, how they sourced their beans, how they roast them in-house. And then, they got to sample different coffees that they brew if they wanted to. So, yeah, that was our most recent experience. And that will go right now.
All right, any questions for Abby? Okay, thank you. We will move on then to Special Wellness Report, Marie.
Sorry that I did not get this Q and A package, but it should be included for each of you for the private school agreement. This is just something that I worked with women and mentors in CISA VII Director's Authorization to put into writing just an agreement between the public and private school of what services we provide. By law, we are required to evaluate, you know, any child in our resident district if someone has reason to believe they have a disability and may need specialized instruction. Most districts, including ours, only provide speech and language services from the public school if a student were to qualify. And this just shows that if we do evaluate a student and they were to qualify for additional services or needs, that a recommendation would be for them to be in a public school so that they could proceed a pre-appropriate public education. However, they have that right to stay at the private school. However, they just would not be receiving the same services. So, it's just kind of a fancy way to put that all in writing with some contact information for the private school who to contact with any questions if they are looking for intervention prior to the referral. That's kind of it, the synopsis. Before I go into the wellness item, does anybody have any questions on what we need to do for everything?
I think it's a great idea to have stuff down in writing, we never have before. And I think it'll just clarify for whoever's involved in it, whether it's parents or, you know, so.
Thank you.
And maybe we'll have more questions next.
And then, for the wellness side, for upcoming staff, developed a date in January as a- as kind of a thank you, but also an opportunity for this staff, we're partnering with Jamie Schmeling from Roots Yoga to offer an hour-long yoga class for any of the staff members that are interested to just relax and unwind after we have a morning full of curriculum talk. So I'm really looking forward to that, so.
Yoga is so good in so many ways, that, I think that's a wonderful idea. Questions? Okay, we'll keep going. Committee reports, the only committee that met was the Policy and Practice Committee meeting, which we are meeting every month, and the board got taste, again, of all the policies we are plowing through. The large majority of them are just little tweaks. But we have to read through them, and we have to make sure that they apply to our, our current situation and our district. And so we will continue to meet every month and, and go through them. But I don't think there was anything of any controversial nature, anything that needs to be discussed further in this.
Well, I did have a couple of questions, but I'll wait till we get down to, do you want to wait till we get down to action items?
No, let's go for it.
Okay. I have a question regarding the controversial issues in the classroom.
I was just thinking of that, because you said there was nothing controversial.
That's true. I think that is a new policy. Isn't that one of the new ones?
It could be. How far are you through this? I mean, how, are you halfway through? You're a quarter of the way through? Just a little smidge? All right.
Do you want to come on to the committee? That, I believe, is a new policy this year. Give Jessie the number of it.
Twenty-two forty, I think.
Twenty-two forty. And I just want to, you know, I, I understand we are in a very politically polarized environment right now, and I think that it's just very important for staff to remain neutral.
Well, which is what we basically have.
Okay, just, just reiterate that.
So as, as you read it.
Yes.
Is how we have it.
Yes, it's not a new policy. We've had it before. The only changes that were made to it, on the very back page of it, we added that the classroom should not be used as a forum for discussion of district employment issues.
Yes.
That was added.
Well, and then put it in the red, the part that's in red, what is that?
Yeah, I was confused.
Means what you're going to add?
Well, we had the option of the two checked, so we took the first check instead of the second.
Okay, all right, okay.
So the part in red is straight, deleted out.
Okay, so I got, okay, all right. And I just want to, the religion in the, in the classroom. There is no more separation of church and state, as far as I'm concerned. When your tax money goes to a private, public religious school, there is no more church and state, but that'll never change.
The only change to that one was we removed the administrative guidelines.
Right, that's just my, I'm just giving my opinion. The only, and then this other one about.
She's giving her editorial comments.
Yes, I'm giving my comments. Field trips. Any trip included in curriculum guide shall be considered to have been approved in advance. It'd be, okay, so you're not checking that one, or that hasn't been checked, or this one. See, I guess I'm under, I guess I misunderstood how this works.
Yeah, it's a, they give options that are all allowable, and we have to decide what we want to have for our.
Okay, and that takes away a lot of my questions or comments. That's all I know, that's all I have?
And maybe we should have been a little better at describing that. And I'm sorry, I don't have, the members of the committee said, don't make a copy for us again for the packets, because there's so much paper volume.
Well, now that I understand how your process is, the rest of them will go a lot better, okay.
Any other questions or concerns? Everybody understand how to read these now. If it's red, it's gone.
If it's red, it's not, okay.
Yeah, with the separation of church and state, we don't ever let religious groups have clubs here after school, do we?
We?
We do, so like there's a, what is it? Good News Club? Thank you.
The what club?
It's called the Good News Club. It's a Bible study.
Is that a religious base?
We cannot restrict them.
Well, I mean, I just, because I. There's, it's not, it's non-denominational, non-denominational?
No, we allow any denomination. We, we just.
Right, it's not.
We can't deny, we can't say yes to one and deny another.
No, no, what I'm saying is that new, what did you call it? The new, it's not, it's not a certain, it's not Catholics or Lutherans.
Oh, correct.
It's not denominational, okay.
Because I, the only reason I ask, because I, you know, like these, all these news feeds on my phone, and when it's educational, I always, I really take note and read them, and one district is, they're in an uproar because there is a Satan club that wants to come into the district. And, you know, parents are like, whoa. If you let one, you have to let them all.
Yep.
Well, I think, I think in that situation, maybe having some kind of participation to see what's actually going on. Because we still can, we still can determine what's appropriate for the students within our walls.
Does, the, the Good News Club, they, from what I can remember, they don't promote a certain religion, do they?
But see, they, but they could.
They're funded by a relig, if I can remember correctly.
And they no longer be at the elementary, so I don't, I think there's one up here.
They do mean up here.
Okay, so it's not like they're promoting Catholicism or, you know.
But we do, you know, we as a public entity, because people of all different religions are in the community, and they're paying taxes for our schools, too.
Right, and I just want, you know.
We have always been under the obligation to.
Let our buildings.
Allow our buildings to be used within reason, you know, and certainly not, not in place of anything else that we needed the room for or anything like that they would have to ask, but that's always been the case. But yes, we can't allow one and not the other, and yeah.
If that happened, it could happen.
People are going to push it, and like those clubs, I mean, that's, I hope that that's not one that we'll be grappling with.
I, well, I wouldn't think so, but I wasn't quite sure, but I'm unfamiliar with that Good News Club a little bit.
Anything else? All right, so we will be going to all these policies then in action and asking for your approval. Current COVID statistics.
Yes, found out this afternoon, we have one student currently testing positive for COVID, and we have one student who has RSV as well. We are seeing a drastic increase right now in GI illnesses, specifically at the elementary school. They had forty students out today ill. So we have been ramping up cleaning and disinfecting of surfaces and using the fumigator sprayer disinfectant, I don't know what you call it, so, fogger, fogger, so. So we're trying to keep everyone healthy before the holidays as much as possible, but.
There is a little stomach bug out there.
That's no fun. Other items for discussion? All right, we'll keep going on to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, and the Policy and Practice Committee meeting minutes of December seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Also move. Okay, I have a motion in a second. There's one small revision of the minutes in that we didn't give Abby credit for giving report for Pathfinder, so we'll just need to change that. I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
With this, with the change?
With the change. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bills that have been presented to us.
I still move. I'll second.
All right, motion made by Jennifer, second by Pat. Any questions or discussion on those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Do we make the motion?
All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve Neola Policies twenty-one oh five, twenty-one ten, twenty-one thirty-two, twenty-two sixty-one point zero three, twenty-three seventy, twenty-four twenty, twenty-four thirty point zero one.
I second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the revised Neola Policies twenty-one thirty-one, twenty-two ten, twenty-two twenty, twenty-two forty, twenty-two sixty, twenty-two sixty point zero one, twenty-two sixty point zero two, twenty-two sixty-one, twenty-two sixty-two, twenty-two sixty-six, twenty-two seventy, twenty-three forty, twenty-four thirteen, twenty-four fourteen, twenty-four sixteen, twenty-four twenty-one, twenty-four thirty, twenty-four thirty-one, twenty-four forty, twenty-four fifty-one, twenty-four sixty, twenty-four sixty point zero three.
I still move.
Motion made by Jennifer, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ann. Questions or discussion on those? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four Algo Mas School District Calendar.
A.
A with the changes in the length of the quarters and the movement of.
Staff Development Day.
Staff Development Day to the twenty-second of January.
I still move.
Motion made by Jennifer. Second by Krista. All in favor? Opposed, none, motion carries. We don't have any changes, because we're doing pretty well. I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five subsections one CE F and I for the purpose of personnel matters, hires, staffing and recruitment.
Still move.
Motion made by Pat, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ann. Roll call vote, Dave?
Pat, yes, yes.
Temper?
Yes.
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 Yes.